Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes from October twenty, twenty twenty five, commission meeting. Oh, here.
Zach.
Here.
Ruth, here. Okay.
Uh, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Item four, discussion. Item four, discussion and possible approval of binding purchase orders. Most to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item five, review purchase orders generated by the Brady County government bodies during the current and previous months and authorized for the last payment of those purchase orders.
Emergency management, quadrant finance, estimated cost for postage, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, POs before the, um, POs after the invoice date. The deal is two hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. Total senior citizens, total senior citizens salaries for employees, invoice dated before PO, ten thousand, two hundred seventy-nine fifty-three. September payroll was dated nine twenty-two and started nine-one. Friend Station, um, to cabin wrecker service, emergency tow, brush truck line on scene. Received on ten thirteen and courthouse was closed for holiday. Towing was requested on ten-ten during business hours, hundred twenty-five dollars. Highway budget, DBGI Consulting LLC, estimated cost for safety glasses and vest, item purchase not listed on the PO. It's a hundred and forty-six eighty-eight. It was a hard hat. Sheriff's Office, Justin Tire Service, seventy-five dollars, um. PO was open on ten fifteen. And, uh, deal is dated ten fourteen. Highway budget, Quill Corporation, um, dated ten twenty-one and twenty-five, proper purchasing procedures were not followed, it's for blood pressure monitor, seventy-five ninety-nine. The item was ordered with no PO open, pass due invoice was emailed to the Cessers Office then forwarded to the purchasing agent.
Can I interject on the emergency management ones?
That one, that one was on highway.
The quadrant.
Quadrant, that was your, um, estimated postage, started, this postage got started before the PO was open.
Yeah, so that information was sent to Amanda's old Gmail, Laura caught it, because next week we'll have Summit that we corrected. For some reason their warranty's mid-October instead of the calendar of this particular year, so we have it in our calendar for next year, so this won't happen again. Cause you'll get one next week that we pay Summit and it will be wrong, but we're correcting that, so it doesn't happen again.
Building maintenance, these are, um, partial payments, building maintenance, Aero Service Group Electric, uh, partial payment of fifteen thousand.
That's what he's done so far.
Are, okay, and this is, uh, final payments on partials, express personnel services, um, eleven hundred and seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Uh, express personnel services, general government, uh, partial payment, one sixty-four twenty-two. General government, express personal service, partial payment, seven seven two eighty. I think these were already read before, cause they've all been signed. They're all partial payments to express.
They get signed every term they come in, but they may just be a final.
But these are all, yeah, these were all already signed, so I don't know why they were.
Is there a, the last?
Maybe it's cause there was a final, might've been, cause there was a final.
Yeah.
That's it. I'll make a motion to Ruth.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item number six, discussion and possible action on reports from the emergency management director, Brady County Fire Department, and state directors. Bill.
So last week we, uh, met with the Chamber YMCA board just to start talking about different contingencies, if something were to happen, could we use their space? Um, things like that in this area, because each, each district has different places that we could use if something happens for shelters or even going to Thomas Barn, they have enough area to put in a hospital and an airplane.
Brady Cannon's barn, right?
Well, Brady, well, I bet.
Just straighten that out.
Yeah, uh, we, I was able to get a donation from, uh, Oklahoma City Dream Center and under the purview of emergency management, I drove Air Jordans out to Burden and gave the high school some Air Jordans, uh, for the kids, and I met the principal as well, so that was a good positive thing. We were able to send a letter of support to the Chicago State Police Department under emergency management, because they're getting a grant for body cameras. And they needed some support letters, so we sent them one, because we work with all of law enforcement. And then this week I'll go to a grant writing class, I'll be able to go, and Friday I'll be off, my oldest daughter's wedding, amen.
Kim.
Um, we did have our board meeting, we did have a quorum, and, uh, I was, it was a good board meeting, I felt like it was a good, um, thorough, everybody understood everybody and, and, uh, got to meet the new board member from Friend, and then we had a CPR class Saturday, and that'll be our last one until after the first of the year. And then, uh, we'll start back over on the last Saturday of every month, if any of your people need CPR or would like to touch up.
Thank you.
Kim, Val.
Um, I've completed all the monthly inspections, including the facility walkthrough, fire extinguishers, and fuel leak tank. I also obtained three new extinguisher for the construction crew, new warehouse building. Uh, this week I'll be attending our annual Fall, uh, ACCO Conference in Norman, and below item three, there's just some, uh, other areas that I went back and did some, um, uh, tree work and stuff like that. Some of these areas I've hit twice, just because since I've, uh, got that pole saw, I'm able to extend and go further out there and, uh, get a more, where it would take a little bit more time for them to grow and stuff like that. Uh, if I could just touch on the item, uh, I have a safety gearbox in the back of my pickup and from time to time, uh, if I do an orientation, I've had some of the employees that have not had the right vest at the barn, so I go to my, uh, gearbox and I'll give them one of my vests, just, uh, and sometimes I have to refill those, so, uh, the hard hat was one that, uh, mine, it was already broken, so I had to get a new one. And so, so, that's all, happy you guys, appreciate it.
Right, thank you. Okay, item number seven, discussion and possible action on the report and work orders from the Construction Superintendent.
Don't have much, uh, your four guys are gonna reschedule towards the end of the week, or the Thursday next week, and then Walsh was gonna start pouring parking lot this week, uh, with the rain, it may push it back a little bit, so he said, we'll see what it looks like Wednesday, Thursday, if it dries up any.
Okay. Item number eight, public comments. Item number nine, new business, in accordance with open meeting, that title came by upon statutes three eleven eight-nine, new business is found as any matter not known about or which could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time posted in the agenda. Zach, you getting anything?
I'm reading.
No new business. Item ten, discussion and possible action on purchasing or assisting with the purchase of a command unit for the Brady County Fire Department.
It's my understanding, it was Rodney asked me to put this on when I put the surplus, that's another, again, item. My understanding is he's been stood with all three of you guys, that figure is ninety thousand dollars, a total of an outfit vehicle, that's all I know.
This is Rodney's.
Yes, and then his, you know, it'll be passed down, I think the one Jesse's gotten is a two thousand thirteen, it's the oldest one of the fleet, if I'm not mistaken, maybe a two thousand eleven.
And how much did you say it was?
Ninety, total.
And that's totally?
Total vehicle purchase plus the update, well, one update quote, looking at her, but.
Jesse's wanting that kind, he's asking that for that of the highway, or out of our highway budgets, I guess? I don't think I was, I, I can't do that. I'm not, I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to do that. I don't know what the other two feel, but that's kinda where I'm at. Kind of the, the way I view it, that money's meant for the roads, equipment for the roads, materials for the roads, I don't think I can justify spending. I can't justify to constituents that's got road issues, why aren't we spending very grand on, on their road money?
Yeah, and I've got so many roads that I don't, I need everything I've got.
I understand that too.
Ruth, let him do that.
I need a new building.
Okay. So, need to make a motion not to.
I think there's no action.
No action. Okay, item number eleven, discussion and possible approval of placing a lien on the property located at two twenty Illinois in Chickasha.
So this is the property that we were going to, uh, previously purchase, over by the sheriff's office to put on, the, the new building on, and the lady never got back with us. And we had done some work, we had sent it over to do the work at Cochran's, so we paid for the attorney's opinion and Cochran did the abstract, which that lady was supposed to pay for. And then talking to Charles, we decided we would pay, go and pay for it, county had a PO open, it was a thousand dollars, but we wanna try to put a lien or something on that property, so that if that lady sells it, she has to pay the county for us being not a thousand dollars on the abstract. So I make a motion to place a lien on two twenty Illinois.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
And who's going to draw up the lien?
I don't know.
We hope Charles.
I can't see when they'll be.
Do you want us to look at some and?
That'd be nice.
He said you, okay.
Thank you. Okay, item number twelve, discussion and possible approval of a petition for a quiet title on the following described real property. Lot one and east forty feet of lot two in block one-ten to the city of Chickasha, Brady County, Oklahoma.
This is the property at nine oh seven Illinois, and we're trying to get all the, this is a property that we took in the June resale, the commissioners, and we decided to keep the property several meetings ago. And so we're trying to clear up the title, and so you have petition, so this is, uh, impairment impairment is doing the title work for us. Um, this is part of the process you have to go through to get the title, to get it clean, so your title's not clouded, your deed's good. This is the property that we would like to build the building on, and we're gonna build the process through, uh, the sheriff's office. So I'll make a motion to, um, approve the petition for the quiet title.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Does he need to sign me too, or not?
No, he just got one signature, yeah.
All right, item thirteen, discussion and possible approval of an affidavit to obtain service by publication for a quiet title on the following described real property, lot one and east forty feet of lot two in block one-ten to the city of Chickasha, Brady County, Oklahoma.
So this is just so that they can publish it, um, showing that we're trying to quiet the title, make a motion, so.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Okay, item fourteen, discussion and possible approval of a corrected lease agreement between Johnson Beck Properties LLC and Brady County for property located at five Honda Lane, Chickasha, Oklahoma, seven three oh one eight.
This is just a name correction, Jimmy and them had J L J Properties on the one that we signed, and that's not the name that's under, it's under Johnson Beck Properties, so it's just resigning the lease for Mike's, the building we're moving back into with the correction of the name of the landlord.
Who's signing this one?
Yeah, on the side, um, it looks like it'll just be you, you know, and you just like, right, all right.
Make a motion to, um, to approve the lease we've corrected.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
You want to be ready, let me know when you're ready for the, the hall. Probably do a little bit more work over there before we.
Remind me of another question.
Say y'all. Item fifteen, discussion and possible approval of cooperative extension services agreement between Melkong State University, acting for and on behalf of its cooperative extension service and the United States Department of Energy Culture and Board of County Commissioners of Brady County. I'm not.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes. Ruth? Yes.
Okay, item number sixteen, discussion and possible approval of removing Betty Sellers and adding David Taylor as requisitioning officer for the Rush Ram Senior Citizen Requisitioning Department, P three oh five, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Seventeen, discussion and possible approval of the declaration of surplus of equipment in accordance with Title nineteen, Oklahoma Statutes three thirty-nine and four twenty-one through four twenty-one point two for Brady County Fire Department, Alex Station, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
It's just, it's just the bed, they're converting that truck to a brush truck, that's just the bed on that.
Item eighteen, discussion and possible approval to reserve the amounts to pay unliquidated encumbrances in outstanding claims fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Nineteen, discussion and possible approval to lapse out the unencumbered balances as of June thirty, twenty twenty-five from fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five general fund and health fund, I don't want you to approve.
Second.
Good, second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Twenty, discussion and possible approval to lapse out the unencumbered cash line balances as of June thirty, twenty twenty-five from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and move to the new fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Twenty-one, discussion and possible approval of depositing a refund check from amazon.com as follows. Twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents into twelve twelve dash two dash twenty-seven hundred dash two zero zero five. Three hundred fifty dollars fifty-eight cents into thirteen twenty-one dash two eighty-two ninety dash two zero zero five and fifty dollars sixty-four cents into one two three five dash two twenty-seven hundred dash twenty-two oh two. Make motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Twenty-two, discussion and possible approval of depositing a reimbursement check from total public schools for materials into Highway District One M and O eleven oh two dash six dash forty-one hundred dash two zero zero five in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty cents.
This is what parking lot we do for, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Who's got it? We're going with Gary, since you guys sent it. Gary?
I would, yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Twenty-three, discussion and possible approval of depositing a reimbursement check from the city of Chickasha for materials into Highway District Three M and O eleven oh two six dash six dash forty-three hundred dash two zero zero five in the amount of six hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents, motion to approve.
Can I ask a question? Did y'all encumber every bit of it, cause we had encumbered some on our side, just for the few blocks that were in ours, and I just didn't know.
I was sure it was our field.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that was.
But that, that one raised all of theirs.
Okay, so I can close out my PO, stand ahead for the partials, I guess. Uh, I need a second.
I did it either.
Go ahead.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Twenty-four, discussion and possible approval of depositing a check from ACCO for total loss of a twenty fifteen John Deere two ten G into the Highway District Three capital outlay, eleven oh two dash six dash forty-three hundred dash forty-one ten in the amount of seventy-five thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Twenty-five, discussion and possible approval of utility pipeline, road crossing permits, water line, fast line permits, and driveway ten mile permits. And just so, just so y'all will know, this one right here, um, we had one working that nobody knew about. And we ended up having to go back and I think they've slipped some, I think they, I'm not, I don't know that they have for sure, but I just think that they're, if we're not catching them, that they're, they're going ahead and doing what they wanna do, and so you need to be aware.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Twenty-six. Twenty, uh, item twenty-six, discussion and possible approval of county officer monthly reports, motion approved. Twenty-seven, discussion and possible approval of estimate of needs, request for appropriation, and transfer appropriations, make motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Have a good day, Charles, you guys later. See you, Charles.
Hey Ricky, where you at? Where you at? Oh, okay, I wanna send Cory up to sign for Gary, okay? Um, they're almost done, but I, um, I think Cory's got something else to go do, so I'm gonna send you upstairs, okay? Sound good, thank you.
You're all, please, you're not better on the, that, I mean, this was.
Yeah. You all gotta fix it, aren't you?
Yeah.
You can?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, you have to move on what your new one is, I probably just want you in.
I think it's all good.
Yeah, I figured too busy.
Yeah.
We signed it with your hand.
It's been already too.
We got the, if, I want, you remember. That's from Acco, uh.
Case?
Case?
No, what, a?
Hitachi?
Hitachi, yeah, yeah.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I think it was a Hitachi.
I think they, I think they do Hitachi now.
Yeah, they do. Jim, James Laird.
Yeah.
That's who I talked to.
Yeah. He's been time, been the by, I remember too.
Is it? Make a motion. We tied a minute, too, better have.
He's the chairman, everybody's. Who's got the second? Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?